Um with it, so I'm gonna be. Recording the session guys, alright cool, so let's get started, so as I said, we're gonna be running through cash trap. Okay, we're gonna do a cash trap breakdown, just a little bit of introduction, just in case there are people who are a little bit unfamiliar with cash trap. And I'm gonna give you some analysis tips on trading view, um just in case any of you weren't in my first H F X study session. I'm gonna be going over the things that I've done in my first H F X study session. So um also it gives you the opportunity to have a look at some entry points. And as I said, I'm gonna keep it to an hour so that we can go on to the next sessions, okay? I'm gonna try and keep it to the hour. So, just before um we jump straight into the N A G R E, I always like to start with the most important thing. Which is mindset, okay, so mindset is the most important thing when it comes to trading, things like mindset, organization. Um and risk management, all of these things go hand in hand when you're talking about making some trades, getting involved in the market and making a profit, okay? So one of my favorite quotes that I've got on here is by Mark Douglas, I've shared it before, it is a really, really good quote. So it says that the consistency that you seek is is in your mind and not in the markets, okay? And that means to say that guys, first of all, as I've said before, and I've said it many a times, you know, trading is ninety percent mindset. And ten percent strategy, so what that means is that you need to constantly be working on having a positive mindset, positive a- attitude and outlook on the market. You know, in order to be able to let that result seep into your results. Because guys, if you have a negative mindset, if you're having a bad day, for example, then you go ahead and you go on trade. That's gonna seep into your results and you're gonna be blaming the markets. When at the end of the day, the consistency is lacking within yourself, okay, so you need to become more disciplined. You need to be working on your mindset, you need to be working on your mindset, guys. I need to be making sure that you have a consistent plan that you're following in the markets, okay? Because some of you guys, you may feel like you're being consistent. Okay, but are you really guys, are you sticking to your trading plan, okay? Are you actually being patient, are you waiting for the market to come to you? Or are you wanting, running towards the market guys? And are you actually following your analysis or are you guessing on where you, where you should enter and what you should be doing? Okay, so again, as I said, guys, you need to be making sure you're working on your mindset and making sure you're holding yourself accountable, okay? So I'm gonna jump straight into risk management, we covered it already in our team meeting, but again. Guys, make sure that you have your trading plan and be consistent with your trading plan, whilst we're talking about consistency. You need to make sure that you're being very consistent with your trading plan, okay? And how many of you have actually printed out your trading plan? Type printed in the chat if you've actually printed out your, your trading plan and you've got it. You know, you're ready to trade, you're ready to cross off the days, you're ready to make sure you can see your profits rolling in. If you've actually printed off your trading plan and you're ready to go, type printed in the chat, so I know. Who's serious, who hasn't printed it and who's, you know, where everybody's at, so let me know guys, because it's really important that you do have your trading plan and you do stick to it. At the end of the day, it's gonna help you stay in line, okay? So essentially, at the end of the day, we all know that we're aiming for a higher overall goal within our bank accounts. But what it is that we need to make sure that we're doing is attacking the mini goals, okay? And the mini goals is your trading plan, that's literally what you've got every single day that you're following, is your trading plan. So it seems like only one person out of um five people have printed out their trading plan, so that's. Clearly, we've got a problem here, if you guys have not printed out your trading plan, listen, you need to make sure you're printing out your trading plan. It seems like only Michelle has printed out her trading plan and Michelle is serious, so she's actually making sure she's crossing the numbers off. So guys, take notes from Michelle, she's very serious, she's printed out her trading plan, she knows what she's doing. If you have not yet printed out your trading plan, if you do not have one, please refer to the links that I've dropped in the group chat, okay? And also, if you're not too familiar with the compound daily um trading plan. Then you can have a different type of trading plan, okay, so I've seen a lot of people doing different types of trading plan that works for them. So I'm gonna recommend this to you guys, it's up to you, you can use your compound daily trading plan. Or you can go ahead and pick a bill, okay? Pick a bill that you wanna pay off, okay, over the next twenty days, twenty trading days, sorry. Um pick a bill that you wanna pay off, okay? And then what you're gonna do is you're gonna work for the next twenty days, twenty trading days, you're gonna work on your trading account. Build up your trading account over the next twenty trading days. And then on the last day, withdraw that money and pay off that bill, okay? So I mean that, for example, you know, let's say you have a three hundred pound, a three hundred pound energy bill, okay? And then what you're gonna be doing is over the next twenty uh trading day, trading days, you're gonna be trying to build up the money, okay? To be able to pay off that, that bill, okay, so if I do three hundred divided by twenty, that is fifteen guys. So that means over the next twenty trading days, all you need to do is make fifteen pounds a day. That's very simple, you just need to make fifteen pounds a day and then once you've got to your end goal. Then you can withdraw that money and pay off your energy bill, okay, or whatever bill it is. So that's just another example of a type of trading plan that you can have, okay? So um, okay, cool, so you've, you've printed out your trading plan, listen guys, make sure you do print out your trading plan. Okay, you may not be able to make your goals just yet, but at the end of the day, you're working every single day to get to the overall goal. And again, like I said, if it works for you, print out that bill, okay guys, and work towards being able to pay off that bill. Um also, just a few um tips that I wanted to make reference to with regards to our broker. So guys, if you're using binary cent, okay, if you're using binary cent, this is what it's gonna look like. Um because I use binary cent, so this is what it looks like, okay? So if you're using binary cent, I want you to make sure that before you're entering into a trade, you're looking at this right hand panel. Okay, so I've actually circled the three things that I want you to make sure that you're looking at before you enter a trade. Because I do get this all the time, where people are ready to enter the trade. And their binary cent broker looks like this and they've just pressed call, they've just pressed put. They haven't changed the time, they haven't changed fixed time, they haven't changed the amount. And then they've either won the trade and well done to them, or they've lost the trade and, you know, the trade was too short, or they've over leveraged. So you need to make sure before you even get to the point where you're gonna make a trade in the market, guys, you need to make sure you're, you're changing the time. Make sure the first thing you do before you even make a trade, before you even selecting currency pairs, change the time, change the amount to your one percent, okay? Make sure you're doing that, guys, because that's really, really key, it makes the difference between actually, you know, having jumped into a trade and, and over leveraged and lost some money. And actually being focused on what you're doing, you need to have patience when you're coming into the market, guys, it's not a rush, it's not, it's not um. It's not competition, guys, this market is open twenty-four hours a day, okay? Twenty-four hours a day, five days a week, and we're trading money in minutes, so you have full opportunity to have access to the market, so you don't need to rush, okay? And also, on the left hand side, okay, looking at the left panel, you wanna look for the most valuable currencies, okay? You wanna look for the most valuable currencies that are paying out the highest, okay? So all the percentages that are next to the currency pairs are the percentages that you'll be receiving back in profit, okay? So you wanna make sure you're going for the highest profit, okay? So, without further ado, I'm gonna jump straight back into it, as I said, guys, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. Um don't wanna end up over um talking into other sessions, okay? This is what we're looking at, we're looking at cash trap, and as I said, as promised. I'm gonna make sure that I give you guys a cash trap breakdown, okay, I wanna give you a cash trap breakdown. Just to make sure that you guys are understanding what it is that you're looking at when you're looking at cash trap. I know a lot of you are probably pressing call and put and not actually knowing what it is that you're doing or why you're doing it. And in all honesty, understanding the background of what it is that you're looking at when you're looking at cash trap. Makes it easier for you to actually make these entries and it also allows you to distinguish what entries are good for you and which ones are not. Okay, guys, so this is the purpose of having to break it down, so what we're looking at is cash check three point oh, okay? And the purpose of cash shop three point oh is just to make it more user friendly, okay? It's more user friendly, you know, it, it identifies to the person what a good trade is, what a bad trade is. If you guys were here before we had the cash check three point oh upgrade, we didn't have what you see here, which is cool score, we just had an up arrow. So we didn't have the cool score, okay? So for those of you others who don't actually know what this is referring to. The cool score essentially is referring to, you know, the amount of confirmation that has been awarded for this particular trade, okay? And guys, please let me know, what's the minimum score that you wanna be entering into a trade? What is your minimum score, drop it in the chat, what is the minimum score that you wanna be entering in for a trade, okay? What is the number that you wanna be entering into a trade? Be very, very specific about what it is that you want, four, five or six, okay, good, good. Four, five, six, these are all good trades, guys, it goes up to seven, I tend to go in for four point trades as well, they still go well. Um some people's minimum is five, that's really, really good, so for example, four is a good trade. Five is an excellent trade, anything above five is, is, you know, higher in confidence for that trade. So, what this actually means is, it's just demonstrating what a good trade is to get into, what's a bad trade to get into. It's literally just being able to specify for you what's good, what's bad, okay? So, it's done in a point system, alright, so. What, with, with every trade, any trade that you're getting into, whether it's cryptocurrency. Whether it's Forex, whether it's stocks, anything that you're getting into requires a confirmation, okay? It requires a confirmation to get into that trade. And what cash shop is, is, is an algorithm which tells you the number of confirmations that each trade has, okay? So it's telling you the number of confirmations that each trade that is being called out every five minutes. It's telling you the not, the amount of confirmations that each of those trades have, okay? And the amount of confirmations go up to seven, so it's a maximum of seven confirmation. So what this means is that if you've got a cool score of two, that means there's only been two confirmations, which is obviously not enough. If you've got a cool score of six, that means there's six confirmations. And these are all confirmations that a trade is going in a particular way, whether that be up or down, okay? And these confirmations, all of these confirmations come from seven separate indicators, okay? They come from seven separate indicators, alright, and just to explain to you what those indicators are, because I know a lot of you see them on the charts. And you look at a cash shop and you look at what this all looks like and it looks all very confusing to you. So just to break it down, what these seven separate confirmations are and all these seven indicators, okay? So, each indicator out of the seven, each of the indicators are all worth one point, okay? Obviously, you know, there's a maximum of seven points, so each indicator is worth one point, okay? So the first one and the most obvious one is the arrow, okay? So, if you're looking for a call, okay, you would count this as, as a point in the up direction. But let me just look for um a more newer, fresher trade, because this is actually quite old, okay? So, as you can see, this trade idea is, has a cool score of one, okay, so it's got one point. The reason for that is because the only indicator that it's got to suggest that this trade is a good trade is the arrow. So the arrow is worth one point and all it is, is, you know, when the arrow is pointing upwards, it, and is the indication for a call. If the arrow is red and pointing downwards, it's an indication for a put, okay, very, very simple, so that's the first thing, okay? The second thing that you wanna look at is the currency strength meter, so this is on the right hand side of the panel, okay? On the right hand side of the panel, next to each of the currencies, there is numbers, okay? So next to each of the currency, there is a number, alright? And this number represents the strength of that particular currency, right? So what that means in relation to the other currency, we have U S D, Euro U S D here, sorry, we have Euro U S D. Euro has a strength of forty and U S D has a strength of seventy-seven. So what that means is that U S D is the stronger currency. Now, when the second currency, which is U S D in this case, is stronger than the first currency, we're looking for a puts, okay? And that means we're looking for the market to move downwards. If the first currency, however, is stronger than the second currency, we're looking for a pull, meaning we're looking for the market to move upwards. So how this now translates into points? Now, if we are looking for a put, okay, and U S D is stronger in this case as it is, that would count as one point, okay? And likewise, if we were looking for a call and Euro was stronger, that will count as a point as well, okay? But in this case, we're looking at a call, there's an, there's an up arrow indicating a call. But the currency strength does not match up with that, so that's why this doesn't count as a point, okay? That's currency strength meter. The next thing is the Bollinger bands, okay, these are the Bollinger bands, it's these clouds that is formed around price. Okay, you can literally see price data remains within these clouds, okay? And the purpose of the, of these Bollinger bands, what we're looking at here is that ninety-eight percent of data actually remains within these Bollinger bands. And this is useful to us, because that means that anytime price thus tried to exceed the Bollinger bands. Anytime price thus tried to come outside of the Bollinger bands, it's going to reverse back into, into it, okay? It's gonna reverse back into it, because it can't stay outside of the Bollinger bands for very long. Because as I said, ninety-eight percent of price data remains within these Bollinger bands, so as you can see, price data is within the Bollinger bands. You can see there's an occasion here where price pushed out of the Bollinger band and reversed completely backwards into um price data, okay? So that's literally just an example of what I'm saying. So, now when we're trying to account, when we're trying to credit this as a point, what we're looking for is for price to be pushing against the side of the Bollinger bands. So, as I'm sure you can tell, when price is pushing upwards along the top of the Bollinger bands, price is moving upwards. When price is moving, is pushing downwards along the bottom of the Bollinger bands, price is moving downwards. And the reason why, you know, the top of the Bollinger band is red, the bottom is green, is because what we're looking for to count as a point. Is when price is pushing against it, we're looking for a reversal, we're looking for a reversal upwards, a push upwards, okay? So if prices, you know, at this stage here, this will count as one point um for a reversal, and as you can see here, price reversed and bounced right back up. So that's how the Bollinger bands, and it works likewise for the same way if you're looking for a put, guys. So that is the Bollinger band, guys, so the next thing I'm gonna explain is support and resistance, okay? And the best way that I love to explain support and resistance is by um utilizing um trading view. Okay, so I'm gonna hop onto trading view, gonna go into G B P J P Y. Just a tip, guys, if you guys do not have trading views, um if you don't have a trading view account. Get trading view, guys, it's free to look at, it's free to analyze, so I definitely highly recommend you guys getting trading view, even just for practice. Um it will take your trading to the next level, once you fully get to the place where you're understanding it. I know, I know initially if you're looking at it, it may seem a little bit confusing, but it's actually really, really not. Um so yeah, guys, get a trading view account, okay? So, support and resistance, right? Gonna get myself on a fifteen minute chart, okay, just to demonstrate to you on a wider scale, what we're looking at with support and resistance. So support and resistance, essentially, these are areas within the market that price has been responsive to. And what I mean by responsive is it has hit that particular price and then started to reverse. So you can see here that I've got a line that I've already drawn out already, and this was probably from a, a past session that I've already drawn out. I'm gonna make it a little bit bigger so you can see, every time that price has hit this, hit this line, has hit this price. Which is one five one, every time price hits here, it starts to reverse downwards, okay? You can see selling activity every time price gets to this level, it starts to sell, okay? So now that's called a resistance or a ceiling, however you prefer to remember it. And it's an area within the market that price is reactive to, okay? So that's, that's um a resistance point. A support now likewise acts in the same way, it's an area within the market that price has bounced off of and started to move upwards. So the support lines that I've got on here are a little bit outdated, so I'll make a new one. So here's a support line right here, so it seems that we had a support line here, okay, there was a support line here, which is. And this area was where price was reacted to, as you can see, every time price hit this line, it bounced up. Um it continued to bounce up until it eventually broke through and created a new support line, okay? So this is support and resistance, essentially, it's areas within the market that price are reactive to, whether moving upwards or downwards, okay? So that's on the larger scale, now what we're looking at with Hourglass now is that Hourglass has um formulated many support and resistance lines. Throughout the market, so as you can see here, we've got little, um we've got little support and resistance lines. Every time, you know, you go down in price in the market, okay? So the reason that they've done that is that it helps you to identify um entry points, okay? It helps you to identify entry points and key areas within the market that you're looking at that could potentially have a reversal happening, okay? So, how you would count this as a point now is if process hits um either a support or a resistance line, that will count um as a point. So for example, if you look at here, if process hit the resistance line and started to sell, so that will be a point for a sell or a put, okay? And likewise, you can see here, process hit this resistance line and started to move upwards, so that will be a point for a buy, okay? So that's support and resistance, just gonna refresh my page, guys, it's moving a little bit slow. Okay, so the next thing that I wanna talk about, so we talked about um the, the arrow, we talked about currency strength meter, we talked about Bollinger bands. Support and resistance lines, so we're four points in now, guys, so the next thing I wanna talk about, point five is the stochastic, okay? So my, my screen is still refreshing, but you can see, okay, so we've got three charts down here, okay, so I'm gonna focus on the first chart. So the first chart, what we're looking at is a form of a stochastic, okay, it's a form of a stochastic, okay, that's what we're looking at on that chart. Okay, so, as I was saying, this chart, which I'm actually gonna expand just so you can see it, okay? It's a form of a stochastic, right? So what we're looking for to count as a point, if we're looking for a sell, we're literally just looking for the S that has just popped up here. If we're looking for a buy, we're looking for a B, okay? The way to count it as a point is the most recent letter is the one that counts, okay? So as you can see, the most recent letter is a, is a S, so the cell would be counted as the point if we're looking for poor opportunities. Okay, so that's what we're looking for, this stochastic, very simple, a B means buy, S means sell, okay? And it's the most recent letter that would be um, that would be counted, okay? The next chart now is a stochastic, alright, this, this chart is a stochastic, I've expanded it so you can see it. Really and truly, you don't even really need to understand fully what it means, what's happening, we need to know this momentum, momentum indicator. And all you're really looking for is this action right here, this cross down and this cross up, okay? So if you're looking for a sell, you're looking for the market to cross down over this red line, okay? And that indicates that the market is going to move downwards. And the reason for that is that it is in a condition where we like to call overbought, it's in overbought conditions. Meaning that price has now reached to the point where it's ready to reverse, okay? So it's reached a point where it's ready to reverse and then it started to cross down, okay? So that's for a put, now if you see that cross down, that automatically counts as a point, okay? So, with the buy now, if you're looking for a buy, it works in the same way, we're looking for a cross upwards, okay? When, when price crosses up, when R S I, sorry, sorry, this is the classic, guys. When the stochastic crosses up over the green line, okay? That's an indication that the market is going to move upwards and it's no longer in oversold conditions. So this right here, this area here is oversold conditions, so just to show you a little bit of what that looks like, okay? So, we're looking at this stochastic chart right here, okay? We had the cross down, so we would have been in this candle here when we saw this cross down, as you can see. And then price moved down, we had a red candle after the cross down, okay, so you would have been able to clear that trade. And also looking at the cross up, okay, let me expand this a little bit. So looking at the cross up, you would have seen the cross up on this red, red candle here, okay? And then you would have entered in for a buy and as you can see, the market moved upwards, so that's how it works with the um stochastic, okay? And similarly, we've got the R S I at the bottom, it's literally the same principles, okay? It's not the exact same chart, it's demonstrating the same thing, but it's the same principles, guys. So we're looking for the cross out, which we had here, and the cross down, which we had here, and just to represent that to you visually. So we had the cross down here, right, so we would have been in this blue candle here, okay? We would have entered in for a put and we would have taken profit, because, you know, we went, the market started to move downwards. And likewise, we're in this bottom chart here, we had the cross up on this red candle, literally the same move as what happened in stochastic and we would have moved upwards, okay? So guys, I know this information is either brand new to some people or, you know, a refresher for some people, but is this making sense? Essentially, the purpose of me demonstrating that is so that you understand what you're looking at, when you're looking at a put score of four, a put score of six. Why that is, why is it six points, why is it five points, okay? So guys, are you understanding what I'm saying, is this making sense? Drop it in the chat if it's making sense, if you need me to explain anything again, if you need a little bit more information, if you have a question, let me know. Okay, I wanna make sure everybody's at the same level and everyone's understanding me and everyone getting what I'm saying, okay? Let me know, guys, where are you, are you understanding what I'm saying? Good, good, good. Okay, good, 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 perfect, so I'm going to continue, guys. So um, as I've, as I've shown you, guys, we have looked now at, you know, the indicators and why there are. Why we're seeing a put score of five, why we're seeing a put score of six, seven, whatever, okay? So now what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna go through and just have a look to see what points are what. And I just wanna test your knowledge, okay? I'm just gonna test your knowledge, I'm gonna ask a couple of you to unmute and tell me why you think a particular trade. Is either, is the score that it is, okay? So don't be scared, you don't have to turn your cameras on, I just want you to unmute and tell me if you understand what I'm saying. So, we've got a put score of six, okay, so can someone unmute, we're on Euro U S D. Can someone unmute and tell me why this trade is six point, please? Let me make sure that you guys can actually unmute yourselves. Okay, guys, you should be able to unmute yourself, so can someone unmute for me, please? Tell me why this trade is actually now four points, four, five points, just tell me what points that you guys can see in this trade.
Uh, the arrow.
Yeah, that's one point.
Um, the stochastic.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a cross down on the stochastic, I know you're still getting used to saying that. Yeah.
The bullin, the Bollinger band.
Mm-hmm.
And also, um, on the right hand, where you have uh U S D, the sign says put over there, I think that's one as well.
No, not the sign, because that's, that's the arrow, so the sign and the arrow, that's the same point, yeah.
Okay.
But you are right, on the right hand side panel, we do have um the currency strength meter, so that would have been your.
Oh, yeah.
So the currency strength meters is in accordance with this, but yeah, that's right. So guys, the reason why um this has changed from four to five is because it was at this point. It was at the resistance point, but then it exceeded that resistance point, okay, so it changed from, from five to four, sorry. So it changed from five to four, so I'm gonna pick another one, guys. Just to make sure you guys are with me, you guys are not sleeping, need to make sure you guys are understanding what I'm saying. Okay. I'm gonna let the new candles come out, guys, as, if you guys don't know, every five minutes, there is a new signal, there's a new candle, because this is a five minute chart. So every five minutes, we've got a new candle, okay? So, um, let's have a look at this one, I wanna, I wanna trick you on. Another one, so G B P J P Y, can someone tell me why this is only a three point trade? Okay, this one's really easy, someone tell me, unmute, tell me why this is only a three point trade, please?
Uh, because, um, well, the cross down's already happened, the, is it the? Sorry, I forgot what the bottom one is, is it the um R S I?
The bottom one is the R S I, so that.
Yeah, so that's, that's not crossed down, uh but the trade is kind of gone already. Uh I mean, the currency strength meter is, is in our favor, I guess, um, but yeah, but it's already kind of happened. Um it's midway, it's not the Bollinger bands, it's not the resistance, it's actually. On the floor, kind of, you know, it's already.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's literally just, it was just at the resistance. It was just at the resistance point when this trade had opened, because as you can see, it was moving upwards, it was, it was just here, hadn't quite hit the resistance point. But it was at a previous resistance, which is this level here, so this trade was a three point trade, because of the cross down and the currency strength meter and the arrow. Okay, so that's, that's the reason why it was a three point trade, okay? So you guys are getting it, you guys are getting what I'm saying, okay? So I'm gonna move forwards, okay? I'm gonna move forward, so all of these things that I'm showing you, guys, is all examples of technical analysis. So when you get to explore a little bit deeper into, you know, how Forex moves and how the markets are, are influencing things like that. You'll get to understand these things a little bit more, okay? So these are all types of um technical indicators, okay, the technical factors that move the market. So the, there's two factors when you're trading, that you're looking for to identify price movements. So the first one is obviously, as I've said, technical factors, the second one is fundamental factors, okay? So fundamental factors or indicators, and these are, these are things that, you know, identify what direction the market could be moving. And these are things that are simple as, you know, economics, it's social, political, all these different types of news that come out. These actually do affect the market, so if you guys are not looking at the news before you're trading. You're leaving yourself, you know, in a, in a vulnerable position, because you don't know where the market is going. So, um guys, if you do not have these websites written down, so we've got Forex Factory, that's a good example, I'm trying to um show it to you on here. Forex Factory, guys, so you guys have probably seen this a lot already, okay? Forex Factory is where you're getting all of your econo, economy news, all of your economic news that's happening around the world. So you've got all of your currencies here, and as you guys know already, you tend to avoid trading the red folders during the times that they are affected, okay? You wanna avoid trading red folders, be cautious of orange folders. And yellow folders don't tend to have too much of impact on the market, okay? And yellow folders don't tend to have too much of impact on the market, okay? So that's what you're looking for, guys, and when you actually see, um when you actually go ahead and click on these folders. You know, sometimes you may have a look and think, you know, do I have to read all of this information? I tend to read why traders care just because I find it interesting. Um, but all you really need to know is is the numbers, okay? So in most of it, it says, it doesn't say in this one, oh yeah. Actual greater than forecast is good for currency, which obviously means if the actual is less than the forecast, it's bad currency. So that can give you an idea of where the market is going. So an example of what that looks like, so we've got the actual, um we've got the actual numbers, actual figures that have come out for this particular. Piece of news and then the forecasted figures. So what they're saying is if this figure, if these actual figures are less than the forecasted figure. Then that means it's bad for the current, it's good for the currency, sorry. So um that's all you really need to know, you just need to look at the figures. And you can have a read through the news as well, but it just gives you a general idea of where you're looking for, okay? And then also what I like to use as well, it's mainly for Forex as well, but it does affect H effects, because H effects for it's pretty much the same thing. Um, it's FX Street, okay? So it's literally like a BBC News but for the currencies, okay? So I'm gonna drop this link in the chat because I know not a lot of people know about FX Street. So you're playing yourself if you don't favorite this um actual website because it's really, really good. Okay, you can even, it's even giving you price information, okay? GBPUSD is trading just below the one point three eight level down on the day, like this is really, really good. I literally used to just look at this mainly when I was trading Forex. So um yes, guys, definitely make sure you're taking down this website, it's really, really key. If you guys have any other websites that you guys use to analyze the market, please drop it in the chat, don't keep it to yourself. You know, that information may help somebody else, okay? So please be drop it in the chat, guys. So now I just wanna go into a little bit of um trading view, just a little bit of trade review tips. Don't want to confuse or worry anybody too much in trade review. But um yeah, just to go into a little bit of trading tips. So guys, you know, you know what the seven points refer to, you know what trades are good trades, what trades are bad trades. You know how to press call, you know how to press put. But how do you know what best, what trades are best for you to go for? Because not all the good trades are good trades, okay? So what is always recommended, especially with something like Cash Trap, which is a scalping strategy. What's always recommended is to trade with the trend, okay? So just so, just before I continue, do you guys all know what a trend means? If you don't know, I'm just gonna explain it anyways, just to make sure that you guys are all on the same level. So you always want to make sure that you're trading with the trend, okay? So you know, outside of actually visually having a look at what the market is looking at, looking like and what trend the market is following. There are different ways that you can utilize to identify the trend that the market is going in, whether it's uptrend or a downtrend. So essentially, when when the market is moving upwards, when there's a repeated pattern of the market going upwards. That's known as an uptrend. When there's a repeated pattern of the market moving downwards, like you can see here, that's known as a downtrend, okay? And if you can't physically tell by looking, whether or not you're in an uptrend or a downtrend, you can utilize things like the EMA, the linjabands. Trend lines, you can draw up some trend lines on Trading View as well as RSI, okay? So I wanna go into a little bit of some of these things, I'm gonna go into some more in other sessions. But you know, just because of time, I'm gonna go into a couple of them, okay? So the first thing that I wanna go into is um the EMA, okay? So I'm gonna show you the EMA on Hourglass, um because I know you guys will be more familiar with how it looks in Hourglass. Okay. Okay, guys. So the EMA is actually this big, um this decline, okay? It's this big decline, okay? So what you're looking for with the EMA is e- essentially, let me explain to you what it is first. But EMA stands for exponential moving average, it's a moving average, okay? So it's demonstrating the average movement and the momentum of price over time, and it's actually very reactive to the the changes of price. So it's actually very accurate when you're looking at what trend price is, and it's really, really simple. When everything, including price, balinjabands, everything is below the EMA line as it is here. That means that we're in a downtrend, okay? When everything is below, like we've got here, everything below the EMA line, we're in a downtrend, okay? When everything is above the EMA line, that means we're in an uptrend, so let me see if I can find an example for that. So when everything is above the EMA line, that means we're in an uptrend. And really and truly, what we're looking at with that is essentially, you wanna be looking for more. And if you're in a downtrend, you wanna be looking for more puts than you are calls. So as you can see here, the the EMA is is below and we've got an uptrend. You can see price is strongly trending upwards. So if you're now looking to, this is the dollar, so if you're now looking to um trade something where, you know, you wanna follow the trend. You would definitely wanna be going for a lot more puts than calls. And the reason for that is because we're in a downtrend, so the market is going to favor puts over calls, okay? And if you are getting in for a call, you're not gonna have as much momentum in the upside as opposed to the downside. Okay, so that's why it's really, really key to know what market phase you're in, whether it's a downtrend or an uptrend. Because this will really give you an edge when you're getting into the markets. So as you can see visually, you can already see we're in a downtrend. There's a lot of downwards action happening, very minimal buying happening, very minimal buying happening. And any buying action that is happening, we have very small candles, can you see that? Anytime that you see a candle, let me even zoom in so you can see this, because this is really important. Anytime that you see a candle that looks like this, 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 what it means is that the sellers and the buyers are battling, okay? And price has been pushed up, the the buyers have pushed price all the way up to this point. But because the selling activity is so strong, it was pushed right back down, okay? So when you see candles like this, it means there's a lot of selling activity that's happening, okay? It means a lot of selling activities happening, and you can even see this is being backed up by um the currency strength meter. We're in a downtrend and USD is the stronger currency. If I even scroll through every trend that you see, um every um currency that you see, that's ever in a downtrend or uptrend. Um, the currency strength meter will correspond with that, okay? Some reason my um Hourglass keeps doing this, but you're getting what I'm saying essentially. Um, when you're in a downtrend, that will match up with the currency strength meter. Now, let me just say, that does not mean to say that you can't trade against the currency strength meter. Nine times out of ten, you can for a shorter time period, but you can get caught out, okay? So you can see here on uptrend and um the currency strength meter is in the favor of the uptrend. So that's one way of identifying um a particular trend, so the EMA. So the next thing I wanna, the next thing I wanna show you is balinjabands, okay? I wanna show you balinjabands. Now, if you were already in my uh my first session, you would already know what I'm going through. If you weren't, this is, this is for you guys. So balinjabands, guys, just to explain to you what it is, it looks a little bit different on um Trading View. And that is because um on Hourglass, these are three balinjabands tasted onto each other. But on Hourglass, it's just simply just the one balinjaband. So a balinjaband is a statistical chart, okay? It's literally a statistical chart, it's literally just based on numbers, and it's just demonstrating price and the volatility of price over time. And as well as the RSI is also indicating the momentum of price, okay? So I'm going into a larger timeframe just so you can see what is that I'm about to explain. So this is another way that you can use to identify whether you're in uptrend or a downtrend, and you can use it to translate within your trading, okay? So you can see in this case that we're in uptrend. Now, when the cloud is traveling upwards, that means we're in an uptrend, and you can see when the cloud is traveling downwards, we're in a downtrend, okay? So just to repeat that, when the cloud is moving upwards, we're in uptrend, as you can see here. When the cloud is moving downwards, we're in a downtrend, as you can see here. Now, when the cloud is going in the middle or extremely wide like this. When it's extremely wide, it means there's there's not that much momentum and it's trying to identify a particular direction to go in. But when it's going in a little bit of a line like this, that means it's in consolidation. Now, what that means is when you're in consolidation, you can actually take up and down arrows. I do like to trade consolidation because you can take both up and down arrows and you do very well. So when you're in a consolidation phase, this is what it looks like. You can take both up and down arrows, it's normally easier because you're just trading support and resistance, okay? So um also, just a little tip, when you're seeing the balinjaband squeeze like it has here. We've got another squeeze here. Um, let's see if I can find another one, we've got another little squeeze here. Every time that you see that little squeeze in the balinjaband, that means we're changing direction. And this is really helpful to us because it helps us to actually plan for a reversal. So as you can see, you know, price was moving upwards. Price was moving upwards and it's still in an uptrend, you know, and we had that squeeze here, we had that squeeze here. You can now utilize that squeeze to plan for a downtrend or an uptrend. You just know that you're no longer able to continue to trade um this consolidation phase or the uptrend phase or the downtrend phase. Is that making sense, guys? Any questions, drop them in the chat, if you guys are with me, let me know. I don't want it to be that I'm just talking at you and you're not understanding what I'm saying. Stick with me, let me know where you guys are at, okay? If you guys are with me, let me know. So um yeah, guys, this is another way that you want to use to identify wherever the market is moving upwards or downwards, okay? And it's really, really key because at the end of the day, as I said, when you're scalping, um when you're scalping the market like you are with Cash Trap, okay? When you're scalping the market like you are with Cash Trap, you wanna be trading with the trend so as to not get caught out, okay? And also, just another question, guys, with regards to um with regards to balinjabands. Who actually knows what this line is in the middle, you've also got it in Hourglass? If you guys know what this line is in the middle of the balinjabands, please drop it in the chat, help someone else. If you guys know what the line is, drop it in the chat, if you don't know, I'm going to explain it to you. But this line is also very useful to us when we're when we're using balinjabands in our trading. Okay, so nobody knows what it is, okay, that's fine, nobody knows what it is. No, it's actually not an EMA, it's not an EMA, it is a, it is a moving average. So EMA is exponential moving average, this is just a simple moving average. It's just a moving average and it works very similarly to the exponential moving average. So this black line in the middle of the balinjabands and this one in the middle of this balinjaband is called an a moving average, okay? And what it is, is just doing the exact same thing as as the exponential moving average, it's just demonstrating the direction that price is going in. Um, and you can use it in a very similar way, when price is trending below the moving average, you've got a confident downtrend, okay? You've got a confident downtrend when price is trending below the moving average, like you can see here, okay? When price is trending at the moving average, so you can see price is literally sitting on the moving average, moving up and down. This is called consolidation, guys. So when price is trending at the moving average, you know for a fact that you're in a consolidation phase, okay? Now, when price is trending above the moving average, you've got a nice, strong, confident up uptrend, okay? So here, you know, price kind of battled up and down on the moving average, but you know, we've got a lot of buying activity over here, okay? So we had a lot of buying activity over here. So um guys, that's how you utilize the moving average when it comes to balinjabands. You literally just wanna be making sure you're trading with the trend because that goes with your actual trades, okay? So um guys, I do wanna make sure that I cover as much as I can, anything that I can't cover, we're gonna go over in another session. Um, but I wanna make sure I can cover entry points as well, because I know a lot of people get a little bit stuck on entry points, okay? When you're practicing on your own, you wanna make sure that you're getting the right entry points, so. Let me show you a little bit of a trick of what I use myself that helps me get some good entry points. So USD card, I'm liking this trade, we're in uptrend, guys, we're above the EMA, we're above the moving average, okay? And we're about to hit this um resistance support, whatever, we're about to hit this line here, the support line. We're about to hit this line here, okay? We also have the currency strength in our favor, so I like this trade. If price continues to move down, we'll also have a cross up, so that'll be one, two, three, a four point trade, okay? And it also hit this resistance, so I'll be five point trade. So I really do like this trade, so I'm gonna go on, go and look at USD card, just to show you guys how I'm identifying my entry points. So every time, guys, every time that I'm about to get into a trade, I go on on Trading View, okay? I go on Trading View and I mark up my charts, you can see I've already got some key levels here, USD card. So we can see here that actually price is now, oh, this is an hour, no wonder. Okay, guys, so price has actually broken through a recent resistance and is now in a consolidation phase, just above of it, just above it. So price is actually not going to stay in this area for a very long, long time, I can already see price breaking through this very shortly, if I'm honest. So this is not even something I would trade regularly, in all honesty, because it's not gonna stay here for very long, but. You can see here that price is literally just battling in consolidation in this timeframe. And I dropped down to the one minute, just so I can see a good entry point, okay? So I would want for price to move down to get to either this level, which is four oh seven or three eight eight. So what you can see here, what I'm doing, guys, is I'm using the um resistance points, the the support points as points of entry. I'm using the support points as points of entry and I wanna make sure that I'm getting to an area where price is about to cross up. So what I wanna see, four oh seven is is a level here that's being shown on on Hourglass. And I can see here that that is four one four, so I would be happy to get into this market four one four for a buy. So as I was saying, guys, before, this is where I wanna be getting in, three nine five, three minute call. It's even gone down lower than that. So as I was saying before, guys, you wanna make sure that you've set up your support and resistance lines, okay? You can see the cross up happening here, this is about to move up, you've got the bias signal here, you've got this here. And where I got my entry point from, guys, I literally, I marked up my chart here, this was a good level for me, I didn't actually put the line though. This was a good level for me, guys, to enter, but whilst I was talking, I could see that price was moving down. So as I'm seeing that, I'm literally looking at the next point here, and so just another small area. As I say, guys, it's not gonna stay in this area for very long, just a small area where price has been ref- respecting. Where price has been respecting, guys. So this is on my one minute, I always look for my one minute chart, okay? So I look at, I identify my support and resistance of my five minute and then look at my one minute. So we are in a downtrend on this trade here. This was supposed to be a four point put, but the market was not yet ready, it hadn't reached the resistance level. So you can see that there's a resistance level being um being um that the price is sitting at the resistance level here. The currency strength is matching up with um the fact that this is actually a downtrend. So when I look at that, guys, I'll just head right over to um Trading View. And mark up my chart. And guys, I'm very patient with my trading, I'm very, very patient with my trading. If I haven't marked up my chart by the time the entry has happened, I'm very okay with that, okay? So I'm looking at NZDUSD. There's a level here at zero nine two. So I would actually want it to come up a little bit higher. To one three two. So just so I can zoom in and show you what I'm looking at. I'm literally looking at the Wicks, guys. These Wicks are key points where price is reactive to, it's showing that price is either gonna use this as a support or turn it into a resistance. Another good way that I actually really wanna show you as well, to get a good entry point. This guy, this F with an X next to it shows you the indicators, okay? So you wanna type in relative strength to get up your RSI. Again, guys, make sure you you've created a Trading View account, you need to create a Trading View account, okay? So this is actually really useful, guys, if you're trying to get the best entry. So you wanna match up your five minute charts, wanna match up your five minute charts with the RSI, okay? And the reason why I'm saying that is because it's going to tell you when price is definitely in overbought or oversold conditions. But you wanna do it on a smaller timeframe, okay? So what you can see is. So what you can see is when price has gotten to this eighty seven point, it's gonna continue moving upwards. Right, it's not gonna cross down just, just straight away, it's gonna continue moving upwards. Because it's in over, it's in trending conditions. So it's gonna continue moving upwards, it's not gonna cross down straight away, it'll probably cross down at some point, but it's in trending conditions, so. This is for your entry points, guys, this is for your entry points. So I actually wanna go over entry points with the RSI um as well, I wanna do that in the next session. So guys, just to, just to con, just to conclude and make sure you guys are understanding me. When you're looking for your entry points, okay? As you can see, literally, as I said, this has broken through the resistance line, as I said to you. Because it's in a trending condition. So when you're looking at your entry points, before you even get in, you wanna make sure that this isn't, this is the right market for you. So we was at a point where price shouldn't have been reversing and going along with. The actual analysis, going along with the currency strength meter, okay, that's the point where we was at. But when you actually look at the RSI in a smaller timeframe, you can see that price is in a trending condition and it's not gonna reverse for now. It's actually past eighty seven percent and it's getting into the nineties now, it's in the nineties now. So um I definitely think you guys need to make a Trading View account, okay? And make sure that you're looking at the RSI and using that as an entry point for yourselves, okay? So guys, I'm very cautious that we have another session coming up, there's a lot that I wanna go through on Trading View. Just to show you how you can utilize, you know, Trading View to get into your entry points, but I don't wanna use up too much time. Okay, if you guys have any questions, please send it to my DM, send it to my message, okay? And what we're gonna do, any questions that you have or any particular things on Trading View that you wanna cover. If you send it to myself and Mel and we can actually have a session where we can. You know, specialize and cover on those specific, specific things that you guys wanna use on Trading View. Because I know a lot of people want to use Trading View for their analysis, so I wanna make sure that you guys are sending over those to me, so we can definitely cover those. But yes, guys, there is another session happening now, seven PM, so if you guys jump onto that session, I will catch up with you guys soon.